I would now like to call us to order. Dr. Cash, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have Spanish language translation available. Lourdes Fleischer is here.
También tenemos traducción en español para cualquier persona que necesite. Aquí tenemos a Lourdes Fleischer, que los puede asistir con audífonos.
Thank you, Ms. Limón. We also have headsets available for the hearing impaired. Before we begin this evening, I would just like to share a very sad loss that our district experienced last week. On October 16th, we lost a very valued employee. Tomas Regano passed away unexpectedly. He, almost 15 years ago, he began as a maintenance and operations worker for us in the school district. He was a driver. Many of us knew him. And with his passing, the world really lost a loyal, genuine, faithful, patient and gentle man. And our hearts go out to his wife and his daughter and his extended family during this very difficult time for them. We'd like to take a few moments of silence now in his honor. Thank you. Dr. Cash, we're now moving on to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Thank you very much, President Deacon. At first, I'd like to introduce our first student reporter of the year, and that's Izzy Bacon from San Marcos High School. Could you come forward and give your report?
Thank you, members of the board and Dr. Cash. My name is Izzy Bacon, and I'm the student board rep from San Marcos. Today I have updates from Dos Publos and San Marcos. So to start, here are some things going on at San Marcos. The new front of the school is no longer an eyesore like it was for 50 years. Students are excited about the new look and improved, the new and improved look. The new wing contains six new classrooms, a lab, a computer lab, and a medical library. Students are also very excited for the new courtyard at the end of the C Wing. The food truck fest is, for the beautiful new front of the school, is a great sign for the food truck fest. Food trucks in the community come the second and fourth Thursday of every month and serve dinner. Started by Mr. Garsky, this brings great publicity to the school. This is a great place for community gathering for the area. SM students are able to get a discount at some of the trucks with their student ID. This year, we have seen a huge enthusiasm for school pride. The Royal Pride has over 600 students in the Facebook group, which keeps everyone updated on when the game, the home games are. We emphasize good sportsmanship and always have positive chants and never put down the other team. We had a hugely successful flash mob last year at the boys' basketball home game, and this year we did another flash mob at the girls' home volleyball game. You can see both dances on YouTube. Kids Helping Kids is off to a good start. We've had a dance, we have a dance on Friday to raise money for the school, for the organization. We will have a few mini fundraisers, as well as the huge benefit concert at the Granada on January 12th. The artist will be announced later on. The new free breakfast program at SM has been hugely successful. It serves free breakfast to all students in the cafeteria each morning. The homecoming dance was a great success. Eight hundred and fifty students attended at the UCSB hub. There were many PTSA chaperones. The weekly nap to the dance, we had a great spirit week with dress of days, and the whole school participated. There are new high-definition flat-screen TVs in many classrooms around campus. Students like it because it is new technology and makes learning easier. Teachers like it because it can easily do PowerPoints or videos on their iPad, and then it goes right onto the screen with Apple TV. So here's a sport update. Girls volleyball is having a hugely successful season thus far. They had an away game, they have an away game on Tuesday at Buena, and if they win, they'll be channel league champs for the first time since 2002. They have already qualified for the CIF playoffs for the first time in a very long time. Boys water polo also had a very successful season. The boys qualified for CIF section playoffs this year. Girls tennis had an outstanding season, and the girls qualified for CIF section playoffs this year as well. varsity football has a new coach this season, Coach Lindbaugh. He brings enthusiasm to the team and motivation. He's spoken at many pep rallies and helps to inspire the students and players. Also, our JV football team is undefeated. Cross-country has two more meets, and if they do well, they will qualify for CIF. So now for, now for performing arts. Bannon Color Guard off to a great start in their competition season. Two weeks ago at Royal High School, they swept in the sectional awards. Color Guard won the sweepstakes award. At the chaffy competition, Bannon Color Guard won everything in the two-way division. The fall play this year is Antigone. There is, there's going to be a special stage made for the show. The auditorium has been transformed to hold only 200 seats to create a more intimate performance. The shows will be on the 15th, 16th, and 17th of November at 7:00 PM. Leanne Sturman and Jillian Fisher were named two of the high school finalists for the Santa Barbara International Film Fest 10-10-10 Student Screenwriters Competition. They will go on to work with current Hollywood screenwriters and create a 10-minute short film. So now here are some updates on Dos Publos. October was LGBT Awareness Month, as well as European Heritage Month. The warm clothes drive just ended, and as a result of the school participation, closure provided for 64 families from five local Galita public grade schools. Ivy, Ellwood, Brandon, Lopetera, and Foothill Schools. Football has had a strong season. Their next home game is homecoming game this Friday, the 26th versus Buena. The homecoming dance will take place at Oral Born Showgrounds, and over 800 students are expected to attend. The homecoming activities will take place all this week, link up to the dance, and include dress of days and activities. The homecoming halftime show will be spotlighting over 75 clubs, sports, and organizations, as well as honoring the nine prince and princess nominees. Queen will be announced at the game on Friday during the halftime show, and the king will be announced at the dance. The senior class just put together a film and filmed a lip dub, a video that includes almost the entire senior class and consists of lip syncing, jumping in the pool, shooting basketballs, and dancing. The video was shot so that when it is reversed, it will look like it was filmed forward. DP will be hosting a blood drive for students on November 8th with Tri Valley Blood Bank. That's all the updates I have. Thank you to the board and Dr. Cash for your time.
Wow. Well, thank you, Izzy. Get us off to a great start on our student reports. Thank you very much. We have some wonderful news to share. At the November 8th and 9th, California School Public Relations Association's Fall Conference and Award Ceremony in Costa Mesa, our own Barbara Kiani will receive the Special Purpose Publications Award by her own organization for the welcome banner that she has designed. Public information officers from across the state meet and share case studies, best practices, as well as communication strategies and tools. The welcome banner, you may recall, was created in response to the FICMAT report on our district's special education department. That banner is displayed at each campus and also as you enter our district office. I have to tell you, this is really only one example of the work that she does in our district. Another messaging example is Everyday Counts banner. That reminds our parents and our students the educational importance of being at school each and every day, and the negative fiscal impact it is to our school district and to our community when students do not attend school. And all of you know as well that Barbara does an incredible job in planning events. In the past two weeks, I don't think she's slept. She's planned multiple events throughout our district, and I wanted to take the time to acknowledge her publicly. It's great that your peers are recognizing your talent and your great work, and congratulations on receiving this very prestigious award. Achieve UC was on October 18th, and brought together about 700 students from across our district. It was held at Dos Publos High School and the Ealing's Performing Arts Center. And from all reports, it was a big success for students and our relationship with the University of California. The parts of it that I saw were high energy. The students were so well behaved and so attentive. It was really incredible to see that. And I missed it. I had some people say I missed it on purpose. The Great California Shakeout, which occurred during that event, and the reports are that our students did a great job in their duck and cover while in the Performing Arts Center. So I want to remind everybody that Thursday at 7:30, San Marcos High School is going to be hosting a school board candidates forum in the school's auditorium, and all four of the candidates for our Board of Education are scheduled to participate. And two of them are here tonight, Ed Heron and Gail Ideman. I think I saw her come in. Yes, right there. Our district's first academy showplace is going to take place on November 19th at Earl Warren Showground. We'll be busing eighth-grade students to the showgrounds to learn about options that are available for them at all three of our comprehensive high schools. At that evening on Monday, November 19th, from 5:30 to 7:30, we're going to invite parents and students and community members to come by and see essentially the same displays and hear about the same opportunities that our eighth-grade students will have heard during the day. We're really excited about that. And our Dos Publos High School mock trial team left for New York today to participate as one of the only two teams from the state of California in the prestigious Empire City Invitational, which is essentially billed as the international mock trial competition. We'll look forward to hearing reports from Bill Woodard, and we'll also look forward to hear, have them come back to a board meeting and share with all of you their experiences in New York and how the event went. Draft three of the strategic plan has been released. Draft four could be released as early as tomorrow, maybe Thursday. And I would encourage everyone and anyone to please take the time to look at it. It'll be posted on the district's website on the front page with a link directly to that draft. I know the board and the task force is still continuing to have interest in hearing input on that. And our school board will meet in a special board meeting Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 to have its first formal look at the strategic plan. I'm excited about that. The last thing that I would mention is that in the back and in front of you is a list of all the fall theater events that are happening in our secondary schools. You heard a little bit about Antigone that's happening at San Marcos High School. Santa Barbara Junior High has the, Santa Barbara High School has the Drowsy Chaperone. Dos Publos High School, a Midsummer's Night's Dream. Santa Barbara Junior High School, Law and Order Fairy Tale Unit. Definitely going to have to check that out. At Galita Valley, Got Broadway, where you'll hear selections from Hairspray, Singing in the Rain, Wicked, Phantom of the Opera. And at Santa Barbara Junior High School, in addition to the Law and Order, will be the Winter Band Concert. And finally, one of the best events that happens from my experience each and every year is the San Marcos High School Shelter Theater performances. And they'll be doing Shakespeare's Romeo and Juliet, December 6th through 8th, and December 9th in Room I-10 at San Marcos High School. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cash. Board, we are now moving on to donations. You do have a list of them available. Is there a motion to accept the donations? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. And at this point, we are going to move on to board comments and correspondence. Dr. Cash has already shared a number of things that have happened recently, but board members, are there any other items you'd like to bring forward? Mr. Heron?
I'll just comment real quickly on the shakeout. I was shaking so much under my seat in the auditorium that my cellphone fell out on the floor. I came back to retrieve it, and some nice young student had heard it vibrating and had picked it up and saved it for me. So I was able to retrieve it. But, but more importantly, Thursday night at the Franklin Center, Franklin School was the parent input night for special education. And I was amazed that well over 100 families were there. I was even more amazed that Dr. Dadi and Mr. Handel were there, working very, very hard, getting it set up, getting it organized, helping put it on. I think that image of our senior staff being present and, and there sent a real strong message. It was a very successful evening. Oh, and I want to thank Nancy Weiss and the food services because she was kind enough to provide fantastic cookies, apples, and water. So thank you, Nancy.
Mrs. Cardera?
Well, since Mr. Heron left, left this one untouched, I will mention the, the State of the District address that Dr. Cash gave yesterday. I think all of us were in attendance there, as were many of you. Dr. Cash spoke to a roomful of members from Santa Barbara community, from our nonprofit community, private companies and corporations, and organizations from the county, et cetera. The information that was shared from Dr. Cash was well received from, I think, everyone in the audience. And everyone I spoke to felt that it was really useful, informational, shared, Dr. Cash shared lots of information that many of the people in attendance were not aware of in terms of some of the variations in our district in terms of our funding systems and our funding mechanisms, our projects that we have in place, the use of our, our bond funds and our parcel tax funds, et cetera. And I just wanted to really commend you, Dr. Cash, for a job very well done. Thank you.
Mrs. Parker?
I just have to jump on that since Ms. Kiani is here in the room, and that was one of the things that kept her awake, I know, over the past two weeks. And to all the support staff on that, that was huge. So thank you, everybody.
I also wanted to note that several of us attended the STEM Forum, the Central Coast STEM Forum on Science, Education Technology, and Math at UCSB last week. And there was a lot of great collaborative work going on there. It was really nice to see some of our students there, our student teachers there. And we're going to be talking more about science this evening, so there's a theme going, but it was, it was really worthwhile. I'd also just like to mention that the Education Foundation did a really lovely job hosting the Hope Awards, where we honored Mr. Handel, our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, as well as the Women's Fund for all of their contributions to the schools. And it was a great showing and really a great performance by some Lacalina singers, and a good opportunity for all of us to remind, be reminded about how much of our community gives back to our local schools on a, really a daily basis. So having said that, we will now move on to announcement of closed session action. We have nothing to report out this evening in closed session. We did discuss Public Employee Performance Evaluation Superintendent Conference with Legal Counsel and Public Employee Appointment Special Assistant Superintendent Special Education, but again, nothing to report out at this time. We will now move on to our consent agenda after we hear public comment. And I believe we may like to employ our translator this evening for some of our public comment up at the podium. Ms. Limón?
So first off, we have Sandra Hernández. Y me parece que Lourdes Fleischer le dará a traducir en el micrófono.
Buenas noches.
De aquí viene la traducción, un momento.
This will be double timed because of translation.
Buenas noches a todos. Yo soy parte del comité de White School, Cleveland School. Estamos aquí para darle gracias a nuestra directora, Dr. White.
Good evening, everybody. We're here, I'm here to speak about what, I have a student at Cleveland Elementary School, and I'm here to congratulate our principal, Dr. White.
Okay. Queremos darle gracias porque estamos caminando nuestros hijos a la escuela. Y hay en la calle Salinas tenemos mucho problema con el tráfico. Necesitamos su apoyo para que puedan poner seguridad como en las calles es Casique, hay otra que es la Santa Inés. También este, la, ¿cómo se llama? Punta Gorda, pasan muy rápido los carros, entonces necesitamos el apoyo para que puedan poner más seguridad en esas calles.
I'm here to ask you if you could please put a little bit more of effort and security on the streets of Casique, and Santa Inés, and Punta Gorda. Traffic is really, really heavy. We walk our children to school, and it's very hard and difficult and dangerous. So I will appreciate if you could please help us to support some kind of security or crossing guards in that area.
Nuestra directora está poniendo todo su empeño en caminar con nosotros por la mañana, en motivar a los niños a que caminen. También, este, estamos, todos estamos, los padres unidos para mejorar, mejorar el camino, para que los niños puedan, puedan caminar con seguridad.
Dr. White, in fact, has been walking with us, along with all of us parents, you know, to those very dangerous streets. She's putting a lot of effort in trying to solve the situation. There's a lot of parents that are getting united to try to solve or disseminate a little bit of this tragic events that could happen. And, but I would like if you could please support our principal.
That's all. Es todo. Gracias.
That's it. Thank you.
Gracias. Ahora seguimos con Ana Rico.
Hi, good night to everyone. Really cold night, really cold. We're here because we're from the PTA, but I'm also from the Walk Committee. This is Maricela, and I'm Ana. We're here because on September 18th, we had a long walk. Ms. White was with us. It was really, really nice for her to be with us, supporting us as parents. And she showed really a lot of involvement in it, which I think is really great because it's showing us that not just us parents are taking care of our kids, but she's also looking into what else we need around the school. For example, APS is one of the dangerous areas because drivers, parents are coming to drop off their children, and it's really dangerous. This morning, around 8:25 or so, there was two cars that were about to hit each other, right in front of the school. One car was coming out of the school, and the other one was coming down the APS. It was a close call. Thank God that the kids were inside class, so, you know, it's just one of those things that it could happen during school time. Also, there's the San Inés, there's the Salinas and Salinas, Salinas and Clifton. There's also Casique and Salinas, which is really, really complicated because the cars are coming and they're going to work. So they're taking the freeway, they're taking what's Carpinteria Street also to get to work. So they're taking shortcuts on Salinas, which means that our kids that go to Cleveland, we have to walk through there. And in the morning, sometimes it's rush hour. I've almost gone in a car accident. Well, actually, no, I've, they've actually almost crashed into me. If it would have been for a truck that was going the same way, I would have got run over with my child. And it is really scary. So we're here because Save Francisco is helping us also, but we wanted the support from you guys to see what else we could do because it's a school zone. So maybe we could meet up and, you know, talk about this a little bit more later on, Dr. Cash. So, and maybe, you know, anything, any ideas, anything would help us get our kids safe to school. Really, really important. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think Maricela was together. Okay, all right. Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Jacquelina Barra and Mari Vazquez.
Good evening. My name is Jacquelina Barra, and I'm a student at Santa Barbara High School. I'm also in Friday Night Live Leadership Coalition. And basically, all three high schools in Santa Barbara get together, and we try to better the community and show awareness of what happens when teens use drugs and alcohol, and we try to, like, lower the usage. And the 23rd through the 31st, we're having Red Ribbon Week. And we're going to have a bunch of activities and classroom presentations to get the students interested and find a better life, and...
Hi, my name's Mari Vazquez, and I'm a student at Santa Barbara High School. During Red Ribbon Week, you must be drug and alcohol free, and we're red wristbands in honor of the lives that have been lost through alcohol and other drugs. We wear a red wristband as a stop sign to stop the violence of drug use and as a promise to maintain our commitment to the health and safety of ourselves, our families, and our young people. On Wednesday tomorrow, we are promoting a community-wide Wear Red Day for Red Ribbon Week. So we are here to ask you to please join us by pledging and wearing red on Wednesday to show your support of the young people in Santa Barbara County who are living a drug and alcohol-free style.
So if you guys like, we have wristbands for everyone, and we'd like to thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Next, we have Melissa Wilkins.
Hi, my name's Melissa Wilkins, and I am the Friday Night Live Coordinator. So I have the privilege of getting to work with these young leaders who represent each of the three high schools in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. And I work with the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, and just here to, again, say thank you for your support for the campaigns that we run in the school to help raise awareness during this time of the year. And we have a bunch of activities going on, so we thank you for your ongoing support for that every year. And typically, there's about 5,000 students that pledge, so it's exciting for us to get to see. This weekend, we also have a fundraising event called the Summit for Danny to not only raise funds, but also to raise awareness for treatment for youth who are abusing substances. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and let you know that we have several of our Reconnecting Youth classes who will be hiking, as well as our Friday Night Live Leadership Coalition participants who will be hiking this weekend to be a part of that fundraiser and also to help raise that awareness. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. And this concludes public comment.
Thank you. Well, lots of great information, and we look forward to Red Ribbon Week and appreciate the information about traveling to Cleveland School and safety issues related to that. We're now going to move on to the consent agenda, board, and are there any items you would like to pull for further discussion later? If there are none, can I entertain a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Which brings us to our action agenda. Our first item, H1, is approval of variable term waivers for education specialists. Ms. Peak, are you going to direct us through this one? Thank you.
Good evening. One of the rather perfunctory duties of our office is that we have to verify credentials for our teaching staff. The variable term waiver is an option by the Commission on Teacher Credentialing for credentialing teachers when they have not necessarily completed all the requirements according to the CTC. These types of credentials typically cover shortage areas such as math or physics, as well as other areas such as special education. We are in need of two variable term waivers for two of our special education teachers. Both of them have completed their teaching credential programs. They needed to complete a variety of exams. One of those teachers has completed the exams, but we need something to cover her from the first day of school up through October when her college can issue the credential. The other teacher was called out of the U.S. on a family emergency this summer, so she wasn't able to take her exams. She has completed one of them, and she has the other one scheduled. Upon completion of that, Cal Poly San Luis will issue her the credential. So we are just recommending that the board approve the variable term waivers for these two particular individuals.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. And just so the public knows, this is something that we regularly and routinely do, and, and we take it seriously, too. While you're up there, maybe you'd like to talk about the Anna Report of Teacher Assignments and...
Gladly. One of the other duties of our office is that we have to review all of the master schedules and ensure that teachers are teaching in their credential areas. The education code allows us to approve teachers based on units that they have that are outside their base credentials. What you have in front of you is a list of teachers and the coursework that they have taken in order to be covered under various ed codes. If those teachers are teaching in core subject areas, they do need to meet No Child Left Behind compliance, and they do meet that. compliance "No Child Left Behind" y cumplen con esa compliance. Así que recomendamos que la Junta de Aprobación de Anual Reporte de Aceleración de Maestros y aprobación de resolución número 2012-22.
Junta, ¿tenemos una motion? Así que movido.
Segunda.
Todos los que están de favor, solo voy a repetir la motion por la recordación. Vamos a aprobar el anual reporte de asignaturas de maestros y la aprobación de la resolución número 2012-13-22, Anual Reporte de Aceleración de Maestros. Todos en favor, díganle aij.
Aij.
Oppuestos, no. Motion pasa, 5-0.
Gracias.
Gracias. Y nuestro último elemento de la agenda de acción, H3, es la aprobación de la modificación del Código de Conflicto de Intereses y la sección 87-306 de la sección de la ley de gobierno, y la aprobación de la resolución número 2012-13-23. Eso es un esfuerzo, pero gracias. Esta es Christensen.
Sí, buenas noches. Cada dos años el distrito es obligado a revisar sus códigos de conflicto de intereses y los appendixes asociados de posiciones designadas. En consultas con el consejo legal, se han hecho varias cambios para reflejar los títulos de posición que cambiaron cuando el Distrito reorganizó. Por ejemplo, el título anterior de superintendente fue cambiado a asistente de superintendente de servicios comerciales. Basado en las recomendaciones del consejo y nuestra propia revisión, recomendamos que la Junta de Aprobación de la Código de Conflicto de Intereses del Distrito de Santa Barbara Unified School District con el appendix A.
Y gracias por su atención a detalle, apreciamos eso. Y todos nosotros que llenamos esto sabemos muy bien cómo hacemos ellos y qué debe hacerse. Junta, ¿hay discusión sobre esto antes de votar? No, creo que es bastante claro lo que estamos haciendo aquí. ¿Tenemos una motion?
Voy a mover a aprobar la modificación del Código de Conflicto de Intereses y la sección 87-306 de la sección de la ley de gobierno, y la aprobación de la resolución número 2012/13-23.
Segunda.
Todos los que están de favor, díganle aij.
Aij.
Oppuestos, no. Motion pasa, muchas gracias. Eso nos lleva a nuestra agenda de conferencia, y el primer elemento que vamos a considerar esta noche es la revisión de la política de la Junta de Aprobación de 5116.1, Intra-District Abertura de Enrollamiento. Y veo a Mr. Sumter aquí para guiarnos en esto. Sé que la Junta recibió copias de la vieja política y una comparación entre eso y la nueva porque hubo algunos cambios que ocurrieron.
Correcto.
Creo que principalmente estamos trayendo esto en este momento para una especie de trabajo de gestión, pero si la Junta quiere discutirlo más profundamente, lo harán.
Y había una pregunta presentada previamente sobre la omitida de una declaración en la actual política en comparación con la anterior que se refiere a las escuelas de vecindario y el valor que la Junta pone en eso. Así que se está trayendo a ustedes con esta comparación de la vieja política con las revisiones incluidas y la actual política, la forma en que se encontró, para una discusión y conferencia con ustedes para ver qué esas sueñas serían para nosotros hacer con esto.
Miembros de la Junta, Mrs. Parker.
Realmente quería agradecer a Mr. Herron por captar este problema y traerlo a la atención de la Junta porque, ya sabes, esencialmente tuvimos, hubo solo cambios importantes en esta política el verano pasado, y hubo muchos cambios en la política que simplemente olvidamos lo que estaba pasando en el primer parágrafo. Y para mí, y mirando por encima, estoy bastante satisfecho con lo que hicimos el año pasado en términos de cambios. Lo único que sugeriría es que volvamos a ese primer parágrafo original, elimine el parágrafo. Hay algunas palabras que se superan, pero simplemente elimine el parágrafo actual que dice "El Consejo de Gestión desearía proporcionar opciones de enrollment" y sustituirlo con el lenguaje más antiguo que habíamos pasado mucho tiempo en dos años previos a eso, que es que "El Consejo de Gestión valora el concepto de escuelas de vecindario, pero permite la abertura de la enrollment en el distrito según las recursos disponibles". Y luego la segunda frase, que es una que se supera, que es "El superintendente o designado establecerá procedimientos para la selección y transferencia de estudiantes entre las escuelas del distrito en concordancia con la política de la Junta de Gestión y regulaciones administrativas".
Así que básicamente simplemente cambian esa frase.
Mr. Herron.
Sí, eso es exactamente lo que he presentado. Tengo una pregunta menor. Algo que también fue cambiado en el proceso era el tema de lotterías. Y sin saber cómo operan sus lotterías, hay una diferencia entre la actual y la vieja. En la actual, hemos sido muy cuidadosos en que cuando tienes una lotería, que todas las factores de prioridad serían considerados. Y dijimos eso originalmente y luego enumeramos cuáles eran las prioridades. La actual tiene todas las prioridades y el lenguaje dice, excepto aquellos, usarás un proceso aleatorio, donde antes decía, si puedo encontrarlo, excepto los que están enumerados, enumerados arriba, dónde está... Dice orden de prioridad enumerado debajo. Así que lo hicimos muy claro que queríamos una lotería donde se usarían múltiples posibilidades. Si un niño se ajustaba a varias categorías, tendrían un beneficio sobre uno que solo estaba en una categoría. Pero no sé cómo hacen lotterías en este momento. No estaba presente en ninguno de los lotterías actuales, así que no sé cómo eliges. ¿Puedes poner todos los nombres en la cabeza y elegir a alguien o usar todas las prioridades?
Es por categoría de prioridad.
Okay, así que todavía lo haces de esa manera.
Sí.
Okay. No era, no es tan claro como creo que era que era nuestro intento, pero siempre que es así como lo estás haciendo, no tengo ningún problema.
Sí, es por categoría de prioridad, por nivel de grado.
Y así que si puedo solo seguirle a eso porque creo que esto fue a la pregunta de Mr. Herron, si un estudiante se califica en múltiples categorías, entonces puede tener precedentes sobre un estudiante que solo se calificó en una categoría.
Pero consideraríamos su categoría más alta en la lista de prioridades y ponerlos en esa categoría.
Bueno, mi pregunta, esa es mi pregunta. Digamos que tienes dos estudiantes que son empleados de, niños que son empleados del distrito, de la escuela. Okay, así que eso es una alta prioridad. ¿Qué pasa si el siguiente, solo uno de los dos era un hermano? ¿Ese que tiene dos factores en su favor tiene prioridad sobre el que solo tiene uno factor?
Consideraría eso, yo consideraría que es una categoría diferente, en realidad.
Eso es mi pregunta.
Y tener mayor énfasis en ese estudiante.
Eso es como lo hacíamos cuando iba a ellos, es que íbamos a, íbamos a, si tenían varias categorías, eso sería arriba y abajo.
Si tienen múltiples criterios.
Así que todavía lo haces de esa manera.
Sí.
Gracias.
No he visto eso aún en nuestras lotterías desde que he estado aquí, pero sí, eso es como lo haría.
Bueno, quiero decir, me sorprende porque en Washington y Roosevelt, eso fue muy, y en Peabody, por seguro, Peabody fue, fue...
Pero no hacemos Peabody.
No, pero yo, yo estuve y aprobamos su política porque queríamos que fuera hecho de la misma manera. Y así, en el pasado, ha habido varios casos donde, ya sabes, alguien tenía dos o tres de los factores y ellos le dan preferencia sobre el niño que solo tiene uno.
Sí, también lo haríamos.
Gracias.
Miss Leemon.
Así que esto es lo que pasa cuando traes back algo que ya hemos comprobado. Seguí leyendo esto y pensé, espera, creo que necesito clarificación. Page 1, bajo prioridades de enrollment.
¿Cuál versión?
La, la versión multicolorela.
¿La de la línea roja?
La de la línea roja. Esa primera frase dice, ningún estudiante actualmente recitando dentro de un área de atendencia de una escuela deberá ser desplazado por otro estudiante transfiriendo desde fuera del área de atendencia. ¿Puedes clarificar eso para mí?
Un estudiante tratando de transferir o deseando transferirse a una escuela no daría preferencia o prioridad a un estudiante que reside dentro de los límites de esa escuela.
Así que si soy un estudiante en la escuela de Cleveland y llegué a la escuela de Cleveland transfiriendo y es aceptada, y estoy en el quinto grado, y de repente hay una nueva familia que se mueve a la escuela de Cleveland, que tiene un niño en el quinto grado, pero la clase de quinto grado en Cleveland está ya llena, ¿qué pasa? ¿Yo, ¿estoy desaparecidamente desplazando a ese estudiante y entonces puedo ser enviado de nuevo? Okay. Así que incluso si estoy actualmente inscrito.
Sí.
Incluso si hay hermanos allí.
Sí.
Okay.
Sí.
All right.
Okay, creo que suena como siempre es bueno revisar esto porque las preguntas siguen siendo preguntadas una y otra vez. Pero aunque esto es un elemento de conferencia, podemos moverlo a acción, y si la Junta está de acuerdo en que básicamente todo lo que tenemos que hacer es reemplazar ese primer parágrafo, me gustaría hacer una motion a ese efecto.
Voy a mover a aprobar las modificaciones de la política de la Junta de Aprobación 5116.1, como discutimos.
Segunda.
Movido por Parker, y eso fue un tie, supongo.
Díganlo.
Mrs. Cordero, segunda por Mrs. Cordero. All right, ahora vamos a pasar a, todos en favor, díganle aij.
Aij.
Oppuestos, no. Motion pasa, muchas gracias, Dr. Cash. Okay, elemento de agenda de conferencia número 2, aprobación de acuerdo entre el Distrito de Santa Barbara Unified School District y el Colegio Lawrence para el año 2012-13 de escuela. Y creo que Mr. Handel va a tomar esto, y me gustaría tomar esta oportunidad para agradecerles tanto por el material de apoyo que proporcionaron. Y, por supuesto, me recordé que hace un año obtuvimos un informe sobre esto, y así a veces los miembros de la Junta olvidan que hemos oído hablar de cosas en el pasado, pero realmente aprecio el material porque fue realmente claro y completo y muy útil.
Bueno, ustedes están bien. aprendí de mi última vez. Así que me da, me da gran placer traer el, el acuerdo entre el Distrito y el Colegio Lawrence. Tenemos a Holly Gill y Bridget Lewin aquí esta noche para darnos más detalles sobre el progreso de nuestra iniciativa de ciencia aquí dentro del Distrito y también cómo el Colegio Lawrence estará proporcionándonos su apoyo con esta propuesta.
Hola a todos. Lo siento. Aquí vamos. Bueno, tuvimos un gran día hoy trabajando con el equipo de la Cámara de la Cámara de Ciencias de Lawrence, y Kate estaba con nosotros hoy, lo cual fue genial. Pero solo quiero darles un poco de contexto, cómo llegamos a donde estamos hoy. Alrededor, casi dos años atrás, cuando Bridget y yo primero entramos en esta posición, compartimos nuestra posición, somos ambos partidarias. Estábamos presentados con esta visión para la ciencia elementaria, y Robin Sawaski fue realmente una fuerza que lleva detrás de esto. Pero esta visión de que todos los estudiantes, desde el kindergarten hasta el sexto grado, recibirán instrucción de ciencia de alta calidad a una régulable forma de su educación de profesores bien entrenados que están motivados a enseñar ciencia, y que los estudiantes elementarios dejarán el sexto grado conozcidos en el contenido y conceptos de ciencia y estarán preparados para lograr el éxito en la ciencia secundaria, así como los caminos STEM en las escuelas secundarias, lo cual es increíble. Así que ambos de nosotros vimos esta visión y pensamos, por supuesto que queremos ser parte de esto. Pero algunas cosas saltaron a nosotros de inmediato. Uno de ellos es que son todos estudiantes, que queremos ver esa equidad en el distrito. Otro, instrucción de ciencia de alta calidad, profesores bien entrenados que están motivados, y esta idea de caminos STEM. Y así, realmente pide la pregunta, si pueden... ¿Este? Lo siento. No. El gran. Aquí vamos. Okay, lo siento por esto. Pero de todos modos, realmente pide la pregunta, que cambiaron mis slides, así que solo voy a dejarlo. Pide la pregunta, ¿cuál es la calidad de la ciencia? Y, y qué es esto, qué necesitan los maestros saber y poder hacer para asegurar esta calidad de sus estudiantes? Y, y bien entrenados, ¿qué significan por eso y qué va a ser? Y esta idea de caminos STEM, ¿qué va a ser? Así que básicamente comenzamos a mirar esto, mirar otros distritos, mirar otros modelos, ¿cómo están haciendo esto y cómo están haciendo esto con la equidad en el distrito? Y no tardó mucho en que nos dimos cuenta de que el Colegio Lawrence es realmente en la frente de todo este trabajo, los esfuerzos reformales que están sucediendo en los distritos. Y así comenzamos a, a tipo de diseñar un plan, que has visto, eso es realmente solo un instrumento para nosotros. ¿Dónde vamos y ayudándonos a mover un poco más cerca de esta visión? Pero una de las cosas más importantes que necesita estar en place es esta infraestructura y capacidad de construcción en el distrito. Y ahí es donde el Colegio Lawrence es tan importante. Están haciendo esto en el área de la Bahía a través de este programa llamado Cámara de la Bahía, que es básicamente una asociación entre el Colegio Lawrence, que es de UC Berkeley, si no saben de eso. El Colegio Lawrence, el Exploratorium y Inverness Research, y realmente todos tres de estos grupos están trabajando colaborativamente para apoyar los distritos y apoyar el trabajo que está sucediendo en los distritos. Así que no es solo PD para maestros, el desarrollo profesional de maestros, porque hemos visto que sucede una y otra vez en los distritos donde mucho dinero se gasta en el desarrollo profesional. Todos están emocionados, listos para cambiar la práctica, y dentro de unos años, cuando el dinero se ha ido, volvemos a donde estábamos. Y así han realmente mirado esto de manera diferente y estratégica, y mirando el distrito y cómo las estructuras en place afectan la enseñanza de la ciencia. Así que, nuevamente, este esfuerzo coordinado, están incluyendo la universidad, el Exploratorium, que sería una institución educativa rica en la ciencia, maestros y el entero distrito. Y realmente están buscando mejorar la cantidad y calidad de la ciencia en las escuelas de la área de la Bahía. Así que pueden estar pensando, bueno, están en la área de la Bahía, ¿por qué estamos buscando ellos? Estamos en Santa Barbara. Bueno, nadie lo está haciendo como ellos. Y realmente, después de mucho tiempo y mucho de la investigación, llegamos a encontrar que son los mejores y queremos aprender de ellos. Así que Bridget y yo hemos mantenido contactos, llamamos, en realidad volamos allí y, o caminamos allí y nos reunimos con ellos, y cuanto más hablamos con ellos y, e intentamos aprender de ellos, pensaron, ya saben, tal vez podamos tomar este modelo y moverlo fuera de la área de la Bahía y ver si realmente podemos ayudar a otros distritos. Y actualmente trabajan con siete distritos en la área de la Bahía y todos de diferentes tipos. Trabajan con Oakland, que es enorme, y pequeños distritos como Petaluma y Newark. Y así decidieron trabajar con nosotros. Y pudimos asegurar financiación a través de la Fundación Worten para traer a los líderes de la Cámara de la Bahía aquí. Y tuvimos nuestro primer seminario de liderazgo hoy, que fue extremadamente productivo. Fue un montón de trabajo duro, pero fue genial. Y puedo ver cómo esto va realmente mover nuestro distrito hacia adelante, mucho más que solo explotar el PD allí, pero realmente tener un esfuerzo coordinado para mejorar la ciencia para todos los niños. Así que esta asociación con la Cámara de la Bahía, que es realmente el Colegio Lawrence, es la institución líder de este programa. Así que esta asociación con UC Berkeley, el Colegio Lawrence, y el Distrito de Santa Barbara dará a nosotros esta asistencia con los seminarios de liderazgo, lo cual es lo que pasó hoy. Y lo que estamos tratando de hacer es tener una parte vertical de liderazgo. Así que todo el camino desde Dave Cash hasta maestros, incluso incluso incluirán algunos padres. Teníamos un miembro de la Junta, Bridget y yo participando en eso. Teníamos un maestro de ciencia junior también. Así que realmente tratando de obtener esa parte vertical en el distrito y mirar qué necesita cambiar y cuáles son algunas de las prioridades que podemos identificar ahora y trabajar. También ayudarán con el plan del distrito y mirar esto realmente estratégicamente, y eso será principalmente con Bridget y yo y ayudándonos mientras movamos adelante, y seremos los que señalen eso. Otra estrategia que estamos mirando es no solo esta capacidad del distrito, sino ayudar a los maestros, y eso es realmente lo que Bridget y yo hemos estado haciendo durante el último año y medio, trabajando con los maestros. Comenzamos con maestros de kindergarten y hemos pasado a, lo siento. Alguien cambió mis slides y los cambió, lo siento. De todos modos. Así que hemos estado trabajando con los maestros, comenzamos con el kindergarten y luego pasamos a los grados uno, tres y cinco. Y este año estarán entrenando grados dos, cuatro y seis, y realmente, realmente tratando de apoyar a los maestros, cumplir sus necesidades de contenido, así como las necesidades pedagógicas para enseñar ciencia. Y la idea es que queremos que los niños se involucren en los mismos tipos de prácticas que los científicos se involucran, no solo leer sobre la ciencia y responder preguntas, sino el hacer de la ciencia y realmente emocionarse por ello. Y así es realmente lo que hemos centrado en nuestros entrenamientos fundamentales. Y estamos empezando a ver un cambio en la práctica. Incluso los maestros que históricamente sentían que estaban haciendo un gran trabajo en enseñar ciencia ahora están mirandolo de manera diferente y mirando más el proceso de hacer ciencia y haciéndolo más centrado para los estudiantes. Y solo compartiré algunas historias rápidas para ustedes. Pasé por uno de los schools, no puedo decir dónde era, pero estaban haciendo esta investigación donde el estudiante tenía que básicamente pegar una broca de bolas a su escritorio y luego equilibrar un lápiz. Así que tienes tu broca de bolas y tuvo que equilibrar el lápiz en el extremo. Y se les dio un cable, un cable flexible y algunos ganchos de cinta para usar como balanzas. Y estaban haciendo esta investigación en física de ciencia sobre equilibrio y movimiento. Así que habían estado hablando de balanzas y equilibrio, y esto fue un poco difícil. Y así los niños estaban trabajando en ello, trabajando en ello, y en como 15 minutos, estos son los primeros graderos, y están tratando de conseguir este lápiz, el equilibrio en el extremo aquí, el bolas de bolas. Y caminaba por ahí y uno de los maestros... And I was walking by and one of the teachers, Holly, you have to come in here, you have to see this, see what these kids are doing. And the kids were just beaming, they were so excited. And so, I went around and I was seeing what they were doing, and she, she said, no, you don't understand, this is a really big deal. One of my students who just struggles to read and, and he just struggles to be successful in school, he was the first one to do it. And I had no idea that he had this ability. And, and then he was the one who was the expert in the class, and all the other students were looking to him. And how did you do that? And pretty soon, you're going around the class and you're seeing just how engaged all of them were and how they were able to shine in different areas. And so, that's something that's super exciting to me. Another, just real quick story is that with the, the final strategy that we're looking at, you have in your, in your notes there, is this idea of, of this STEM learning opportunities, preparing them for junior high, high school, and the world beyond. And that really is going to consist of these vertical teams, kindergarten through twelfth grade, and just, just the beginnings, having a junior high teacher with us today. And so, Ben, I look forward to working with you in this as well. But also having these partnerships with the community. And one of those is the Museum of Natural History. And especially in the lower grades, we've really encouraged teachers to get their kids outside and, and explore the natural world. And kindergarten classes are, are learning all about trees and doing these investigations with trees. And, and we've encouraged them to visit the museum. And the museum has this backyard area that is amazing. If you've never been, you have to go. And a teacher was telling me, last year, she brought her kindergarten class, and there was a little boy who, he hardly spoke, and this was the middle of the year, very, very few words and really struggled to say anything. He was an English learner. And they were out there in the backyard, and they'd been there for about a half an hour, and they really just get to explore, and it's so cool. And I had pictures, and I don't know what happened to them, I was going to show you. But they were on there and somebody took them off. Anyway, he's out there messing around with the leaves and looking for things, and he found something in the ground. Teacher, look, look what I found! And he's speaking and just so, so excited about it. And it just, from that day on, just turned a corner for him. And he was, he just was different in the classroom. And to, to talk to this teacher about it, it's amazing. It, it, it really did transform this little boy. And I think there is so much to say about that, connecting our kids with the natural world. And so, that's exciting to see. But what we're doing alone is not going to change all this. That's where this, this partnership with Bayside, with the Lawrence Hall of Science is so, so critical. So, thank you for your support in this. And if you have questions, it's not just me, it's Bridget and I, but we thought probably best to just have one of us present for your questions.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for coming and for sharing that. I can picture it, even if you don't have the pictures, I can certainly picture what you're describing. And I suspect some of my board members may have some questions for you, so I will throw that open to them now. Mrs. Parker.
Well, I'll start off because I was fortunate enough to be at the, the meeting today. And it was a lot of hard work, but it was really productive. And I want to say really thank you to Ms. Gill and Ms. Lewin for, for persuading the Lawrence Hall of Science to come and partner with us. Not least of which, I was telling the team today that the Lawrence Hall of Science is where my physicist husband, he proposed to me there. So, it has a special place in my heart. But it's, the district has really tried to focus on elementary science education through No Child Left Behind. I feel like it's been, we've really lost a lot in science. There's such an emphasis on language arts and math, as science has fallen by the wayside. We've tried, starting with Science Matters, through the district, having these two people sharing one position to help with elementary science. And now, moving on, I think really to the next level, I hope, with this Bayside partnership. I think that this is terrific. We really struck with how much work there is to do, but also feeling like it, it won't happen if it's not a priority of the school board. So, it, what we talk about and what we focus on is going to be key in order for this to really work. So, I think it's important that we keep that in mind. And I just have a quick question. This is on the conference item, as a conference item, and maybe this is for Mr. Handel. But the recommendation is to approve the agreement. Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Heron.
Yes, I'd, I'd just like to thank you for finding the outside funding. I think, I mean, that's huge. I think it's a good example of what we're going to be faced with in the future. And we need to share with everybody else how you did it. Because it's going to be something that's going to be, needed to be done quite a bit. So, thank you very much.
Since we've been in this position, we've been approached by a few different funders who would like to get involved with helping out the Santa Barbara Unified School District. This project is being funded by the Wharton Foundation. Jean Pettit, the president, has been a very important supporter of elementary science for the last decade in our district. So, we wanted to thank the Wharton Foundation for what they've given us up to this point.
Thank you.
Ms. Lee Moon.
First of all, thank you very much. Ms. Gill, if the students are half of as excited as you are, we are going to be in a great place. I'm excited too. I do have a question. Where does this particular piece fall in the long-range STEM plan for our district? So, the 2018? Is this the beginning? Is this something that's going through 2018, or is it too early to know?
Well, I think this is really the work that has to be done so we know where we're going. The, the plan that you were given, it's really just an action plan, a tool for us to know where we're headed. The work with them is really going to flush this whole thing out. And they've worked with so many districts that they know where the roadblocks are, and yet they're, they're able to tailor their support to each individual district. So, that's something that will come out as we move along.
You first see this as kind of laying the foundation to get more direction for the 2018 plan.
So, there'll be, there'll actually be three different sessions this year where they come down, two days each time. And so, we'll know more, like even tomorrow, we'll, we'll end the day with an action plan to get us through the next few months when they come back and, and report back to that.
Great, I look forward to seeing those. Thank you.
Mrs.
One of the things that I'd just like to say to that is, one of the reasons why they came down is because they see the, the Santa Barbara Unified School District as a district that is moving forward in a way that very few districts are these days in science in California. So, for them to come down to Santa Barbara, come out of that Bayside area, it's huge. However, they would not have come earlier than now. So, the importance that the district has put on it up till now has been critical to them coming. For example, the foundational training that's gone on for kindergarten, for first, third, and fifth, and we'll finish up with second, fourth, and sixth this year. That's key to have happened in order for them to come in now and say, okay, how can we make it better? Without that, there would have been really no purpose of them coming. Do you see what I'm saying? We had to have done that first, so.
No, that makes sense. Thank you.
Mrs. Cordero.
Could either of you talk about, and also, I want to thank you for not only finding the program, which it sounds like you really put a lot of effort and time into, but also, as Mr. Heron said, for securing the funding for it as well. Could, could either of you talk about any support there is for English-language learners?
Yes, this is a huge emphasis for them as well, in the districts that they're working in. And, and just that the Lawrence Hall of Science is really focused on this as well. Not only them, but there are teams of people that are specifically focused on literacy and the English learners. And, and I think we have a lot to learn from them in that area. We do see science and literacy going hand in hand, and we've been able to incorporate some of those things in our foundational trainings for teachers. But there's so much more to learn and to incorporate here. So, that's very near and dear to my heart, as you know, and not something that I'm willing to go by the wayside, so.
I appreciate that about you. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. And I did have one quick question also. I know that the, the Common Core for Science is not really out yet, but the framework, I believe you've had a look at, and there'll be another look coming next week. Can you talk a little bit about how you're going to incorporate what you've already learned about Common Core and science into what you're doing?
Actually, we had a great discussion today about that. So, you're speaking specifically the Next Generation Science Standards?
Yes.
There's a huge emphasis on science practices and engineering practices. And so, we talked a lot about that. That's that doing of science and the application of science. And, and so, we're really moving in that direction with the kind of science that we're teaching. We will be looking at, at that framework as we move ahead. And Dr. Craig String and then Dr. Vanessa Lujan, they're, they're well-versed in that, and they, they participated in, in giving feedback on that. And so, I feel like we're being led by, by experts in that area. Our current curriculum is not aligned to that, but, but we are able to bring in what we know about that. And, and, and it's, it's much more that application that needs to lead the way. And that's, that's that first, first and most important part of the, the framework is that the science and engineering practices are throughout all of it.
I know. It's interesting that they've, they've really put a lot of emphasis on engineering that'll even fall out into the, the elementary age group, which is great.
And it's just, sorry, it's just such a perfect time with the Common Core and the Next Generation Science Standards. And, and they just, they, they fit hand in hand, and I think it will be a great way to present that to teachers.
Good. And, and the vertical integration, I'm glad you mentioned that over and over because I think our junior highs and high schools can really give you information about how they want the students to be prepared and, and where there may be gaps. So, that's much appreciated, as is the continuity of the two of you in this job, because I think we've really benefited from that and from the Wharton Foundation's long, longtime support. This is not something new for them, supporting science in our elementary schools. So, thank you so much. And I guess we could move, go ahead and move to approve this.
I'll move to approve the agreement between Santa Barbara Unified School District and the Lawrence Hall of Science for the 12-13 school year.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, next up, something near and dear to my heart, the update on the summer partnership between McKinley Elementary School and the University of California, Santa Barbara, the third-grade swim program.
Again, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Britt Ortiz and, and Tia Blickley, Ashley Lamp, Laura. McKinley representatives to first talk about this summer's third-grade swimming partnership with UCSB.
Well, we're going to just do a little bit, good evening. I'm Tia Blickley from McKinley. And we're just going to share some exciting things about the program, and then I'm, sorry, we took you first, but. Anyway, it was a very exciting program for us, and we have some children, well, we were had, some months that we're going to come to, but we have some letters that were written by the kids explaining how much they loved the program. And it was a chance for the, our third and fourth, incoming third and fourth graders to take, that thirty students to take eight swim lessons with UCSB. And each child got a bathing suit and a towel and goggles, and it was pretty exciting. But I think it's better if you hear from them than from me. So, do you want to share, please?
My name is Louise Gisada. I learned how to swim this summer at UCSB. This summer, I was able to practice how to swim with my fingers closed. I went in the water with my goggles, and I felt a little bit good. I want to thank my mom, dad, principal, bus driver, McKinley, and our teachers for letting me go to the swimming program. I had fun at the swimming program. I used to speak because it was, I, I was able to learn how to swim.
My name is Ashley Lamp. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at McKinley, and I was one of the summer school teachers. I taught the incoming fourth-grade students. So, one of the things, one of the best things about this program, of course, was that it was free and that it was providing this opportunity for a large group of students who wouldn't have had the opportunity otherwise. When we got on the bus, we took the kids out there, as Mrs. Blickley mentioned, it was about thirty students between the third and the fourth-grade classes that were able to go. This was just a random grouping of kids from McKinley School, and only one at the age of eight, nine, or ten had ever had formal swimming lessons. And this wasn't, you know, just a particular group of students. This is just a random group of kids from our school. So, it was really incredible to see what a big opportunity this was for them. Only a few had ever even been in a swimming pool. Many of them were terrified to get in the pool, in the water. But the program was so well-organized and set up to support these kids. They started out by teaching them water safety, regular pool rules and that sort of thing. They explained to the kids how the program was going to go. They really got them feeling secure. They did assessments to see what the levels of water skills were and then grouped them accordingly. All of the instructors were so well-trained and well-prepared that it was just incredible to see how quickly the students gained confidence. And pretty soon, all of the kids were swimming back and forth, forth across the pool, and it was just amazing. They taught them how to float on their backs, how to breathe from the side, all these skills that these kids would never have learned. And they picked them up in eight lessons. And I wanted to read a letter from one of my students who wanted to be here but was not able to come. And it was the letter that he wrote to his swim instructors to tell them what this program meant to him. I have to paraphrase a little bit because his writing skills are a little shaky, but it was absolutely in his own handwriting. And here's the gist of what he said. Dear Zoe and Kelly, I miss you because you are the best swimming teachers ever. Thank you for teaching me how to swim across the pool. It was really scary, but at least I tried swimming across the pool. At the end, jumping off the swimming board was awesome. When I jumped off, I felt like I was, wasn't going to float back up, and I was afraid I would die. But I believed you that I would float back up, and it was amazing. I appreciate everything you guys did. To Zoe and Kelly, from CSAR. So, you know, a lot of these kids, it could be a dangerous situation for them to be in, to be around a pool or even to be at the ocean. And our kids live so close to the beach. But I, some of the kids go to the beach and they never go in the water because their parents are terrified of them being in the water and not knowing how to swim. And, you know, in talking to some of the parents, a lot of them don't even know how to swim. So, they are not able to teach their kids the water safety skills. So, not only was this a good opportunity for the kids to have fun and really enjoy themselves, it's really a safety thing as well. You know, these kids are living in a place where the water is such a huge part of our community, and they either aren't able to participate in water activities, or they could do so and possibly be in danger because of it. So, I thought it was really a great opportunity for our students. And I would love to thank, once again, the UCSB people for arranging this program and inviting our students to come out and participate. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Laura Lewis-Hardigan, and I teach second grade at McKinley School. And I feel very strongly, and I'm happy to be here tonight to support this program. I'm pretty sure that this type of program is exactly why Mr. Handel is sitting exactly where he's sitting. It's innovative, and our goal in our district right now has to be to close that cultural gap. That has to be a goal. And for us to close a cultural gap, our students have to feel like they can belong in our community. When they go to high school, they have to feel like they can join the swim team, the tennis team, the golf team, and any other team they want to be on. And when they don't know how to swim, they're not going to go join the swim team. That's just the bottom line. So, it's these types of programs, much like the Harmony Project in LA where they're bringing instruments to low-income kids. We've got to provide opportunities for these students that are low-income that don't, they just don't have the opportunity to take swim lessons. They just don't. And this provided them with that opportunity. Every student in my class, I don't have one that knew how to swim for the summer, not one. After the summer, the letters, I wish I would have copied, I told Tia, I wish I would have copied the letters. They would have just grabbed your heart. Thank you, now I won't die. Thank you for teaching me, truly, thank you for teaching me how to swim. They need to feel like they belong in our schools. And when they go to our high schools, they need to feel like they belong on the swim team, they belong on the tennis team, and this will bridge that gap. So, I feel, obviously, I have a strong feeling about this. I'm married to a Hispanic man who grew up very similar to all our students. He is now in the Santa Barbara Police Department, and he still doesn't know how to swim. And I'm going to. And I'm going to teach him.
Don't say that.
But he, we have this discussion almost daily in my home because he was not afforded those opportunities. So, we're, I'm so excited to be part of Santa Barbara School District these days because we are so on a roll of getting just cutting-edge innovative programs. I'm really proud of the things you guys are bringing to the schools and just here to support that, so.
Good evening, I'm Daisy Estrada, I'm third grade teacher, Louise was or is one of my students, and I had several of students who actually wanted to come and share their letters and experience over the summer. And I was able to be with them for a few lessons and I just wanna actually speak in behalf of the parents who I've spoken with and who they were so thankful because, like Laura said, a lot of them don't know how to swim. My parents who, you know, grew up in Masaan, which is very much like a city, an ocean city just like Santa Barbara, still don't know how to swim. And I, you know, I never had swim lessons, so I relate myself to a lot of these students and speaking to the parents and, you know, that were able to come with us on the bus to UCSB and they were actually able to bring their siblings and their siblings were, be able to be part of, not the lesson instruction, but be able to part, playing little kiddie pool while their, while their big brother and sister were taking swim lessons. So, it actually became a family, you know, a family event. And that was actually really exciting for a lot of the parents and they were, just kept saying, I, you know, I never thought about putting my kids into swim lessons and I, you know, now they know how to swim. That's one thing, one less thing I have to worry about. So, I just wanted to speak in behalf of the parents and how thankful they, appreciative they were.
Now you get to have your turn. Thank you so much.
We actually have a presentation.
Well, we'd like to see it.
We'll do it.
I have to say that these speakers that are coming up now were actually, this program was their brainchild, what, six years ago, eight years ago? Maybe you're gonna tell us about that.
While we go back even further than that, first of all, these pictures are archival pictures from a program we ran in Galita Union School District. I guess the last time.
Peter, do you wanna just state your name for the record?
My name is Peter Nuschel, I'm the vice president of something called the South Coast Community Aquatic Center. We're obviously not on the header, but we're providing the funding for the program. So, anyway, we're gonna present this in three parts. I'm gonna give a brief introduction and then Mr. Ortiz, actually, Mr. Kuga and Mr. Ortiz are gonna follow me in talking about the more current program, but this is just the So, we had a summer pilot program at McKinley and Mr., that will be addressed. But first of all, I just wanted to note from a historic standpoint that this school district a hundred years ago was the first in the United States to offer credit for swimming. Interestingly, it was all at Los Pueblos School and it was for girls primarily, which is fascinating. So, I don't think probably that Santa Barbara School District existed at that time, but Santa Barbara High School did. And so, what we would like to do a hundred years ahead is make lessons part of the fabric of being a third grader, an elementary school student in Santa Barbara. That's our goal. I understand that's very difficult and that was our goal with Galita Union School District. And we put fifteen hundred kids through every single third grader for three years through third grade swim lessons as part of their curriculum during the school. Not during the summer, which is very difficult and you'll hear about that, but during the school. And it was kind of an expensive enterprise and we had funding from the Santa Barbara Foundation, we had funding from ourselves, the South Coast Community Aquatic Center. We exist because we built the Dos Pueblos Pool. Your current president was our second president. Your current superintendent was the principal at Dos Pueblos High School when we built that pool. But part of building that pool was reaching out to the community and thinking about what the community wanted. And I believe it was Kevin's father, Jim Kuga, who was our first president, who proposed a third grade swim program. And we took that to heart, we took some of the money that we raised for the pool, we got funding from the community, certainly via the Santa Barbara Foundation, and we did do this for three years. And we have some money left and we've used that for a pilot program that is now going to be discussed by Mr. Kuga and Mr. Ortiz. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Kuga. Pretty much my role in this program was to be the director and be on the pool deck just about every day that we had swim lessons and pretty much ran a sort of managerial part of the program. So, obviously, it was a great experience for the kids and for us in general, myself, Peter, and Britt, it was a great way to get the program started again after running it through the Galita Union School District. And right away, we had a lot of support from a lot of different members of the community. It was great to have the Santa Barbara School District provide transportation. It was very, very easy, very simple, kids pulled up on the bus, they got right off and we pretty much put them in the pool almost right away. Our time was definitely limited, but the help that you guys gave us by providing the transportation was essential to the success of the program. We also got a lot of donations for the equipment for the kids. I can't explain how excited they were when they got the, when they found out that they're gonna get a brand-new bathing suit and goggles. That was kind of one of the first highlights for all of them. But we have, we got mesh bags that all the kids got and provided, I actually brought an example and left it down there. Very simple, all the kids got a bag and then they had a number on it, so as soon as they showed up, they just went straight to their bag, they remembered their number, and their suit and their goggles were always in it. They were not allowed to take them home until the very last lesson, so that always guaranteed that they would come back and they would have them at the pool. But this also allowed them to keep track of their own possessions. When they changed into their suit, they put their clothing, their school clothing, just into the mesh bag, so we had very few lost items. The instructors at the, for the program were paid college students at UCSB. They're all very, very good and highly motivated to do this program. It also is extremely useful to have a few high school volunteers, extra bodies to work with the kids, just allows you to have more involvement and more instruction. The pool itself at UCSB is an amazing facility. For those of you who have not seen it, the all shallow pool is pretty much where we ran most of our lessons. And on the very first day, when all the kids showed up, I would say about, my first five questions were, what is this place? It's amazing. How do I, can I come here every day? I mean, they were just stunned by how unique and just great the overall facility was. Moving on to pretty much the general process that we went through to get this set up, had a few meetings, talked with Emilio quite a bit, and we got all this together and went through in the summer and pretty much organized a great program that allowed us an opportunity to run this as a pilot and, more importantly, gain a lot of information that would help us run it for the future. It was, it was great, the lessons learned, I mean, obviously, there were a few things that we needed to kind of fine tune while we were going through everything, but a big thing that we realized was just going through, you know, getting kids orientated to the facilities was, you know, an essential step because once they knew exactly where they were going, it was very easy to run them through it over and over and over again. And by the time, I think, our last lesson happened, by the eighth lesson, they were in and out of the locker rooms and into the pool within fifteen minutes because they were just ready to go. And definitely, the biggest lesson for me was just getting the kids to overcome their fears. We had several students who started off not even wanting to put their feet in the water and by the end, they were swimming full laps. So, the actual instruction itself was pretty much as quickly as possible, we needed to get them assessed in their swimming abilities. So, we put them in the pool and just asked them to demonstrate anything that they knew how to already do. And for most of them, that was limited to pushing off the wall, having their head above water, and then immediately putting their feet on the bottom. It was obviously a fear thing, but just from the little assessment that we were able to do, we broke them up into groups, you know, four to six students per instructor, and pretty much right away went into full-on swimming instruction. The one thing with the instructors, they were pretty much given a basic, try and get these kids as comfortable as possible in the pool, and then we let them do their own teaching styles. And personally, I think that's probably the best way to run a program of this kind, is let the instructors teach the kids because it keeps them comfortable and it keeps the kids to have, you know, having a good time with their instructors. The lessons themselves were generally forty-five to fifty minutes long, taking into account that we had about an hour and fifteen minutes total, and we needed fifteen minutes in the beginning to fifteen to twenty minutes at the end for changing and getting the kids back into their normal clothing. But a big thing for these lessons was the kids were in the pool pretty much the entire time, and forty-five minutes can be a long time to spend in a pool, especially if you're just standing there and it can be a little bit cold. But with this particular group of kids, they were always so excited and so motivated to be there that they just went on ahead and just kept on splashing, kept on moving around. And once we actually kind of gave them a few more incentives, like the diving boards and being able to dive for rings, they would stay in that pool pretty much all day long if they could have. So, this, the next slide is not actually on this presentation, but just a few of the statistical outcomes that came out of the program. We had thirty-seven students who came in and they attended at least four of the seven actual swim lessons. And of that number, thirty-five were tested in the last day and twenty of them all were able to swim twenty-five yards unassisted by themselves. And that was, a fifty-seven percent success rate was phenomenal, especially considering that four of those students started off at the lowest level and they were assessed initially as not wanting to put their face in the water, not wanting to do anything other than stand on their tippy toes. Four of those students, by the end of the lessons, were able to swim all the way across the pool unassisted. Another big part statistically was a hundred percent of the class was able to push off the wall in the deep pool, not in the shallow pool, in the deep pool, push off, swim a few strokes, about five yards off the wall, turn around, and then get back, which we found was incredibly important because in a safety environment, if a student falls into the pool, the initial reaction is not always to turn around and go back to the wall, it's to struggle. So, with all these kids, we instructed them and it was very obvious that they could go out and they could turn around and they could get back on their own. So, that safety point was very clearly stated to the instructors and they made sure that all of the students were able to do that. And then the last thing was, we had the greatest amount of success with groups who had higher number of instructors. And so, having more volunteers would be extremely beneficial for moving forward and one of the things that I've been thinking of is having high school students come in and get their community service by helping to teach swim lessons. And then, moving on, we have a few examples of the students' letters that we actually got and, I mean, they're amazing, they speak for themselves. I mean, this student, this was before the Olympics were actually happening and he said that, you know, by the end, he wanted to be able to swim in the Olympics. And coming from a student who was scared to get in the water on the first day, I mean, it's, it's great, it's phenomenal. Next letter was, I mean, Sitlali, she was probably one of the more enthusiastic students coming in. And by the end, she definitely admitted, you know, that she was surprised at how well she did. And with a lot of the instructors, they also agreed that they were surprised at how well these kids did. And then there's a few more, Jackie, you know, the, I'll never forget, or you teaching me not to say I can't or telling me I can't do it. That's one of those things that's, you can't, it doesn't really have to do with the swim lesson itself, but it's, you know, it's a life lesson. When you tell yourself you can't, you usually end up falling short. But with a lot of these kids, instructors are very, very supportive and they encourage kids, like, no, you can, just keep trying, you can do it, you can do it. And they are able to achieve a goal that they never initially thought they could. A few more, actually, moving on to the poem. So, one thing that we did really like was, one of the teachers informed us that the students were working on poetry in their classroom, and so, the students actually incorporated swim lessons into their poetry. And, I mean, it was, it's awesome to see how these kids are just, I mean, they're eating it up and they're applying it in other ways not related to the pool, so. The last bit I have is the, one thing with the instructor feedback was the enthusiasm that the kids showed. I personally have taught several private swim lessons to kids where it's very one-on-one and the students are always a little bit more down and they're like, oh my gosh, my parents are making me do this, and they're really not that excited. It's complete opposite for this program. The kids are one hundred percent involved and excited to be there, and it really shows with the instructors because the instructors are therefore like, okay, let's keep on doing this, let's keep on doing this. And the buildup for, you know, the amount of enthusiasm that goes from the students to the instructors shows just from a day-to-day basis of how much more the students get out of it when the instructors are having a good time and they're excited about it. And then, obviously, you know, what did the, what did the instructors learn from working with the students? They learned especially how to deal with students who have never necessarily been in a pool, ever, in their life before. And it was definitely new for a lot of them and it was great for them to actually get that experience of like trying new tactics to try and get them to succeed, so. And then the last bit is just the, each student, after they complete the program, regardless of how far they are able to swim, they all received a certificate. And this was like the icing on top of the cake or the cherry on top, kids were just so excited to get this, this one piece of paper and it was great to see them all extremely happy and proud of themselves by the end of the program. So, I'll let Britt continue with the moving forward.
So, good evening, everyone, my name is Britt Ortiz, I'm the director of a program called Early Academic Outreach at UC Santa Barbara. And one of the pieces that we brought to the table along with this partnership between three Dos Pueblos Charger alumni, as well as, as well as three UC grads, I'll just toss that in there, was the idea of attaching a college piece to this. How do we help, if the students are gonna be at a world-renowned institution, how do we expose them to the university? And so, that's part of what we wanted to put forward in terms of expanding the third grade swim program into another east side as well as a west side elementary school. We'd like to look at two, we have enough funds right now to support two more schools. We need sustained transportation, as we mentioned, that's one of the challenges. And so, we would look to the school district again to hopefully partner with us on that, as well as we're now looking for sustained funding. We, as was mentioned, we originally had a grant for the Galita Union Project, we're now looking at other foundations, we've started a discussion with Santa Barbara Bank and Trust. If any of you know of any benefactors that would like to contribute to this effort, we're open to that as well. And then to continue to partner with the district in looking at, are there granting opportunities that may be related to physical education or health, general health and wellness? And then, one of the things that we used to do with the Galita program, Galita Union Program, was this idea of getting some scholarships secured so to have students, if students wanted to go further into aquatics, swimming or water polo or anything else, that we could potentially offer them scholarships into those opportunities. So, we'll be looking at trying to restore that piece. In terms of the general opportunities, as I mentioned, this idea about college, we wanted to call, we wanna look at the idea of swimming to college, you know, how can we use this swimming opportunity and then expose to the, to the college? Of course, this is a very unique model. In fact, it, we think it's probably one of the only ones in the state, if not the country. Pasadena has a third grade swim program, but it's run very differently than what we have been doing and it's not as strong a partnership between the community, the school district, and the university. This is also an opportunity to open doors to lifetime health, wellness, and safety. The in- The increased access to regional aquatics, as was mentioned, look at where we live. We have lakes, we have rivers, we have the ocean. We know that there's a, a link to swimming and academic achievement. We also know by firsthand experience what type of self-esteem and confidence opportunities took place. You know, the idea of overcoming these obstacles and challenges and conquering a fear of the water, it's tremendous. I, I literally was telling folks that on the first day of lessons, I was the happiest man on the planet because I saw so many happy faces and there's nothing that can beat the happiness of a child learning how to swim and being in a pool. I mean, it's just, it's tremendous. And then this, the idea that this is, we can replicate this. It's feasible. We've done three years in a row with, we did, or we did three years in a row with Galleta Union. We did this pilot program with the assistance of Emilio and McKinley and the staff and the parents and the students. And so we believe absolutely that we can do this at other schools. And in fact, we would love to put it out there down the road, the idea of can we do this across a whole district? Imagine that opportunity, imagine that commitment, imagine the legacy that's already here in Santa Barbara, us being the first school, school district to ever have credit for lessons and now we could be that first district that could have swim lessons for all third graders. And then we want to enhance the college knowledge component. One of the things that we'd like to do is suggest that the students come early one day of their lessons, maybe on the culmination day, and we actually tour them around the campus. We have some panel speakers. We introduce them to facilities around the campus, show them what the rec cent is all about in terms of it's, it's sustainable, it's a model for the country. So we can also put some themes in there around science or around sustainability that the students would get to touch upon during their experience. And this idea of opening up doors to aquatics and career opportunities down the road for the students. So there's a lot of value-added benefits here, whether it's the idea of introducing students to basic water safety skills, reducing the probability of drowning accidents, the idea of physical activity and motor skills development by these students. It was very neat to watch some of the students actually learn how to be very coordinated in the water and then suddenly they're swimming. It's an amazing opportunity for them. It meets standards in terms of PE, it fosters lifelong health and wellness and safe, safety. The trust and confidence building that went on between the instructors and the students and this opportunity for UCSB students to engage the community, that was supported by Associated Students Community Affairs Board. And just the, the fact that this is a community coming together for our youth and that this is in partnership and that we're opening a door. And I would say, for me, the door was open when I was in high school and I became that first person, that first, what seems to be historically, that first Latino to swim at UCS, at, at Dos Pueblos High School. Eventually became an MVP of the soft rush team, varsity lettered in water polo and swimming. Met my very good friend here, Peter Nuschel, and have had a lifelong friendship with this man. And we've been able to create something and who would have thought? Who would have thought that that, those four years of my opportunity to swim would have changed my life and allowed me to, to provide this opportunity as well as partner with these gentlemen to create something that could be very, very phenomenal for the community, for the district, and for our families? And I think that we cannot shy away from this idea that these students would have this door open to belong, to feel like they belong to this community, the aquatics community, and our high schools and being part of those, those athletic opportunities. So, we would like to ask that, that we continue this, that we be given the opportunity to partner with two more schools, one on the east side and one on the west side, and then we continue to, to partner together and look for other opportunities for funding. And so that's, that's that. Thank you guys very, very much for the opportunity.
Well, thank you all for such a great story about the success. And I agree that this is something that I would definitely like to encourage to move forward. You know, it's, it was a long time ago when I worked with Kevin Kuga's parents on the DP pool. In fact, Kevin and my son Kyle both graduated the year they broke ground for that pool at Dos Pueblos. But this third grade swim program has always been on the radar for the folks that were invested in, in the aquatics of our community. And finding sustainable funding is, is obviously going to be the key for this. When you were speaking about Pasadena, I remembered that the Rose Bowl program gets a fair amount of their money from community development block grants from the city of Pasadena. And, and now that you're in Santa Barbara City Schools, that may be an additional place to look for, for funding as well as, as others, as I know that you're really looking into. But I, I think it's really important for everyone to know that drowning is the number one cause of death among young people under 15 years of age and, and low-income children are much higher at risk as well. So, great program. Board members, any other comments? Mrs. Cordero?
I just had a question because I, I'm, I've, I've talked to you, Britt, about this program before. I love this. As an avid swimmer myself, I mean, I just think, I, you know, kids, once they feel safe in the water, love swimming. I don't know any kids who don't love swimming once they get over being afraid of the water. So I was just wondering, were there any opportunities for disabled students to participate in this? Did you have any adaptive, you know, equipment or?
Do you have all of the pools have access?
I'm sorry, could you go to the microphone because we try to capture it for the TV?
All of the district pools have to have access?
So that's built in. UCSB probably has some of the best access I've ever seen in terms of, for the, for handicapped students. When we did the third grade swim program, we provided that access and we did in fact have a number of handicapped students. Our goal really in this, as Susan Deacon pointed out, we are well aware that drowning is a, you know, it's a horrifying thing. I mean, adults fall in a pool, they never learned to swim, they can't turn around and get back to the wall. That's the second-leading cause of death after car crashes, I believe, amongst children 14 years and under. So, but yes, indeed, we have that capability and, you know, we have dealt with that. But this particular class, I don't believe had, when I went and visited, did not have handicapped students, but we can accommodate that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ms. Limon?
Well, I just want to thank everyone involved, including the staff and Mr. Handel and UCSB because I think it is a great program. I know that there were just some last-minute things that kind of came about, but I also really appreciate the college-going piece. I think that anytime we have students on a university campus, we have to leverage that. And I know that, I remember actually being at McKinley School for a summer program and we walked to the kiddie pool because we didn't have swim lessons. So I've never had a swim lesson in my life. So I think it's really meaningful. I think it's really meaningful. I think it's something really important for the community and I'm definitely hearing a theme tonight about safety. We heard parents talk about safety on the streets, but equally, the comments about the parents who are really thankful because this is an issue and not all parents can afford to provide private swim lessons for students. So I am glad you did this and I am thankful for all of those who were involved.
If I can just quickly thank President Deacon and Ms. Limon publicly because they're the one that connected Britt and I. So, thank you guys.
Dr. Cash, thank you.
I want to say, hey, great job, Luis, speaking tonight. You are fantastic. It's really great to hear from you how important this was and what a great time that you had. And want to publicly acknowledge everyone involved in this because this, this program will save lives, period. That's something we need to do.
And I, the key is to find sustainable funding. And, and so we're going to have to really work at that. But I think, I think where there's a will, there's a way, right, folks? Okay, so are you looking for any direction from us moving forward or?
No, we already have plans that we, that we've made. And we'll, we'll bring that to the board's attention as soon as everything gets solidified.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. All right, we are now going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Institute presentation. Dr. Droudi.
Thank you, Mrs. Deacon. You know, it is very encouraging to hear the movement towards STEM. Coming from a science background, I know how important that is. So I was also pretty, pretty, when I taught, when the state standards came around, I saw, when it, when it came out to the fact that a lot of the students in elementary weren't tested in science, that was pretty disheartening for a lot of science teachers also. It made, it just made the job much harder for the high school teachers to really provide the information and science to take the students to where they need to be. As we move forward with STEM, I mean, you, you heard yourself in a lot of these debates, the President of the United States has even declared that that is, that needs to be a major focus for the nation, for our, for our safety, for our economic growth and everything else. So, so it's an important movement. And as we move forward, one thing we have to always remember is that when we introduce these concepts at the elementary level, that stat development that needs to take place has to be something that our teachers can handle and especially at the elementary school, which a lot of these teachers are multiple subject teachers and yet they're taking engineering concepts, math, math concepts, and science concepts and trying to have it make sense for students. So that's a tough, tough task. And I really do commend a lot of the teachers that are willing to fail forward in their attempts to do that. And we had six of our teachers partner with Santa Barbara County of Office, experiment with ideas of STEM. And I'm glad we have a place like, a place like them and also a place like Lawrence Hall now that we can actually partner with in providing the stat development that needed. I'm not going to talk about the details of the experience the teachers had. I mean, it was, it's an amazing thing they did. And I'm going to, some of the teachers I think were here, but I'm going to kind of name off, we have six teachers in the district that participated in the, in the work. Robert Cooper from Adams, Chai Hayden from La Cumbra, oh, yeah, raise your hand or something so that way. Blake Garnett from Adams, Marilyn Garza from Santa Barbara Junior High, Claire Paziones from Peabody Charter, Ann Bumpy from Peabody Charter. And another person here also that helped facilitate that, that stat development is Ellen Barker. She works for the, the Apple Fresno here, Santa Barbara County Office of Education. So, and thank you for coming. With that said, I'm going to bring up, I'm going to invite Susan Salcedo. She's the chief academic officer for, for Santa Barbara County Office of Education and she'll tell us about the program.